Eight fifteen. That one says eight fifteen, nothing.
Your conference start later.
Let's close up. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our county board meeting. We'll begin the meeting with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America, the picture of the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Judge's ceremony. Come up and give us your good report.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
All right. Thank you. Well, I guess I'm here alone today. Usually Mr. McDonald and Mr. Rubenstein join me for today, but they must be busy. So, and I know that there's a treatment court conference going on in the cities that I wasn't able to attend. So, in any event, I'll get started. I handed out to you some statistics from our Drug Court and Veterans Court program. I'm here today to give you an update, as noted on this document, and also to request again your continued support of the program. We've, I think it was 2006 we began the program, and so, you know, we're looking at fourteen, seventeen years here. Oh, great. Just started. So, I'm giving the presentation today because Don Keltzman, who is our, was our coordinator, has moved on to a different position within the branch. And so, we just hired a coordinator who's at the conference, and that person is Crystal Cadree. And she actually used to be part of the county, worked for the county for the county attorney's office. And she was coming from being a judicial law clerk in Clay County for Judge Rosenfeld. So, she's joining us. She's just unable to be here today. So, with that, we are here to request again your support, both financially and otherwise. And so, I can note for you that some of the statistics, the Drug Court, the current participants that we have, again, were Clay Becker. So, we're a joint court. Separate courts, but jointly in the program. So, we have twenty altogether at this point, and five in Becker. But we do have two that are coming in right now that have been approved. It is simply, they are in treatment right now, and so, they haven't exactly been at court. So, we didn't include them in the statistic. And these are current as of beginning of May of 2023. So, when that, when this was written by Don Keltzman, I didn't have those, that information in here. So, in any event, you can see that graduates from our program overall, 120 were employed upon graduation. One was enrolled in college as a full-time student. Fifty-eight obtained their driver's license while in the program. Others already had theirs. All of those who were required were current on their child support payments upon graduation. Everyone is sober for a year upon graduation. All have completed community service projects of at least fifty hours and paid off all court fines and fees. And when they graduate, they're also, they also give us an essay about their project and how the program has affected them and how they gave back to the community by way of that project. And I did, last month, I believe it was, I shared by email with all of you, one of the letters that one of the Drug Court participants had read at the graduation. Of the participants, twenty-three have re-offended since graduation, which is only nineteen percent. It's a nineteen percent recidivism rate over all of these years. That's very, that's very good numbers. We have the graduate demographic data there for you. Currently at Veterans Court, we have one participant who just started about a month ago. Eight graduates total, three from Becker. None have re-offended since graduating. And so, we have the total graduates number of these two programs that have joined tracks at the number of 129. Eighty-two percent have not re-offended. And so, those are really good numbers. Page two of the handout simply shows the budget. And since I'm not the day-to-day detail Drug Court Coordinator, I have the information for you, but I can't go into detail the detail behind the numbers. But if you have any questions, I can certainly try and help you, help answer those questions. Or if you have any for Mr. McDonald, or if Mr. McDonald has some comments, I'd defer to him.
I just know the program gives them a much better chance than than traditional routes. I mean, we've seen it over the last decade.
I think the past county board has been very receptive to throwing in some funding for this program, and I've been supportive ever since I've been on the board, and I think it's a great program. And the Drug Court, but the Veterans Court started later, but, and hopefully new members will support it also.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Thank you for your work. I think addiction's hard, and we need programs like these for people to be successful. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Because obviously, the one thing you want when someone's charged and convicted, you don't want them to do it again, right? So, that's the whole goal. We don't want them to be back in the criminal justice system. So, for those people whose, who the impetus was to commit their crime was an addiction, we treat the addiction, that can many times change behavior, and therefore reduce recidivism and see them be productive members of society. I do thank you for your support, and I hope that you'll consider supporting at the rate that you did last year. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks.
Agenda confirmation. That's where we're gonna head.
Yes, Commissioner Oxon, on, under Human Resources, number five, if we could add, consider part-time payroll position, that's something Carrie will be talking a little bit more in depth with you about. So, if we could add, that is number five under Human Resources.
That is fifth.
Yes.
Motion to approve agenda with the addition.
I'll move, I'll move to do that.
I'll second.
On paper, all right. Minutes of May sixteenth. Did you get that one number corrected? Under zoning, it says, I'll look it up here. On page four of six. That's to do with the conditional use of operated maximum twenty-four head swine. That would be twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four hundred, yeah.
When you do the conversion, that comes out to about the nine sixty animal unit. So, that's only a real thing to do.
I got, I got two. So, on page two of six, right under the Finance Committee, where it says regular claims and other warrants and overnight, it should be regular claims, comma, other warrants, comma, and overnight days. It's, yeah. The mother's an English teacher, so. Sorry. I think I have one more. Oh. On page five of six. Where the second bullet, or second dot, where, where Sarah Duffy, and it says common tactics and learning use fear and imitation or throw up. I don't know if we should use the word throw up. Maybe I've
The guy has to strike that.
Throw out, it's all right. Or maybe just get rid of it.
There's a couple names spelling wrongs, too, on page four. Pinky is spelled E-N-K-E. And then I think Madison is, has an I in it, after the M-A-T-T-I-S-O-N.
Anything else? Richard.
Nope.
Motion to approve the minutes with the corrections.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll say.
Looking by Dave, on paper.
Aye.
All right. Commissioners, open forum. If anybody wants to speak to any issue, including the zoning issues, please do so during an open forum. Bob, come on and speak. Just state your name and address for the record.
Public Department, fifteen forty-four, the name. And I come before you today, objection proposed permit for mining operation in our home. They've been pulled by these midry excavation, I think they're called. Anyway, their permit originally said that they were going to are planning on this acreage, which is surrounded by houses of people who live there for thirty-something years. And they want to put in a, they said they're going to put in a dwelling someday on a piece of property, but they're going to take four acres of it, maybe they're going to do what I guess would be a gravel pit. They're going to take out approximately a hundred and fifty thousand yards of gravel. He said, for his use for his excavation company. Now, that raid got bigger than that, about eighteen loads a day. Eighteen loads a day going down to County fifty-four, if you can tell, there is a pretty busy road. Especially in the morning, evening, towards the weekend, probably going. Now, what this presents is a couple of problems. One is a traffic problem, and I know at the zoning meeting, Mr. Oxon indicated that he didn't think it was a problem. I went this morning, as I came, came in, driving past there, I had three cars behind me, I was going forward, which is the speed. They came up on me pretty fast, because they're doing fifty, sixty, they're going to work. Because I'm coming here. So, they didn't have to worry quite as much. And then, the problem is that there's a slight hill, the curve, they got around the curve, down the hill, there's a pit hole. They're coming out with eighteen trucks a day. Now, what happens in the fall, spring, the roads get slippery, who knows? I'm not going to say something, say it's going to happen, a tragedy. Sure, I could. And in the event that that would happen, I don't know about whose responsibility it would be, but it would certainly be the life of a lot of people. And another thing is, as I said, there are multiple homes located in this area. Very close, some within a hundred and twenty yards from the pit. Now, I don't know how many of you have been in a gravel pit. I worked in a gravel pit when I was in college. Bucking on, you know, trying to get to the, they're noisy, and they're dusty. And it's, it's a process. I know the planning commission agreed not to have a crusher put in there, which certainly helped. Appreciate that, and, however, the continued use over a five-year period, and that's what they designed, they wanted five years to do this. Constant noise from eight to five, which when they have given, they've given for ask for the ask for permission, actually, some dust goes on, but the planning information, you know, that perhaps that should be cut to eight-five. I guess that's a victory, but it's not necessarily the ultimate victory, which would be, why should people who have lived there for twenty-some years have a gravel pit come into their backyard? I have neighbors who are going to be, it's in, literally, in, on their property line. Six acres out there. So, it'd be on your property line, wherever your house is located. Some of these people, as they have been out there digging already, have set their window shade that they can hear this noise constantly. They haven't even started digging yet, they're just putting in a road. What happens when the pit starts? It's not worth it. Now, I live about one, two, probably three lots, two lots away from where this activity is going to take place. I'm more concerned about my neighbor's land myself. This is totally unnecessary situation. These people are going, they plan, what they want to do is they bought this land saying someday they're going to build a house there. But before that, they want to dig a four-acre gravel pit, digging out a hundred and fifty thousand yards of material to pay for their lot. Well, I guess that's admirable, you know, if they want to pay for it. But on the other hand, why should the rest of us, surrounded by this gravel pit, have to listen and hear about this for five years? I didn't move out of town, get out there, and listen to that. Nobody did. There are all kinds of people out there. Fortunately, I don't think very many of them caught that this meeting, and that this meeting was sixth at this time of morning, or there'd be more here. More speaker, I think, on the list. Or certainly. So, I guess, in the bottom line, a lot of people out there who have enjoyed the peace and quiet, the wildlife, the harmony with nature that you get when you live in a place like that, and to have this dump in the middle, literally in the middle of a pile of house is an unfortunate situation. Just aim to express my feelings. I have nothing against the midries that might make fine neighbors, when they put their house in. Five years between that and now could be pretty hefty for a lot of people. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
John?
Three nine one hundred, County Highway fifty-four. I was not trying to just speak, but I'm feeling like I should, because I did expect a lot more people to show up, and I just think that communication isn't there that they didn't realize. I mean, it was this morning. We thought it was tonight, ten o'clock, I'm sure. I know that we have about forty neighbors in our little neighborhood that are opposed to it. There was a petition that was signed. And I know we live in the country, but I call it a neighborhood. We've lived here for over twenty years. We bring our four girls. On those lovely twelve acres, it's peaceful. You know, maybe it's a neighborhood. The only thing we're missing is sidewalks, really. And I, and I get that we're in the country, and I understand we want to welcome this family to our neighborhood, but the noise is very concerning. It just is going to disrupt our area immensely. Like, it's, it's going to ruin a neighborhood, you know. They call it a neighborhood, I'm sure. I would ask that you consider, like, would you like a gravel pit two doors down from you? Honestly, would you want that? I don't mind that they're going to do whatever they do to build a house, but I think this is excessive. And my worrying question is, where's the oversight? Who, who will be overseeing? Who will be calling up to make sure that whatever they ask for is all they're going to take? Like, where does it stop? How, how do we know that they're not going to take more and just continue on? And when does it end? You know, and I, I guess, five years is a long time, you know, to do this and do this. They want to move stuff to build a house, fine. No one has a problem with that. It just seems like it's going to be a long time. We can, I can hear the trucks right now. And I'm not going to be there to argue, maybe they're just clearing the road. But it does have my suspicions up. Like, they seem to be operating, like, they already know that this is going through, that this is even going to be a problem. I don't know why you'd be investing money in clearing something when you haven't actually had permission to do so. I walk that road regularly. It's dangerous, and, you know, my husband doesn't like my walk. He covered with speedo cars, because he dreams, he's going to, but he don't. They have rigs out on the highway, and there's no ditch. You can't really go through the ditch. You're forced to go around all of these vehicles onto the actual highway. But I, I'm just, I'm just really concerned with the, the length of the project, the amount. And we've got at least forty people that are against it. And I would hope that you would listen to those voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody that didn't have a chance to sign in the open forum that want to speak? Not close open forum. Thank you. Reports and correspondence. Why are we sorry, Erica?
Um, I just had a couple meetings since we last met. I had the, we had the EDA meeting. We, through the EDA meeting, we created a subcommittee for housing, which I'm a part of, when we also met in the last couple of weeks. Really, we're just looking to see what the EDA can do to bring some more affordable housing to the county. I also had the staple, the meeting in Staples on the twenty-fourth, where it was just a conference for mainly new commissioners on just how to have difficult conversations with constituents that are maybe calling you to be upset. And then I had the first, we had the Benefits Committee on the thirty-first, which was, went really well, I think. And then we had our first meeting for the Crow Wing Watershed, which is just starting, and we're going to be meeting monthly just to get that up and going. That's all I have.
Yeah.
I have a couple. So, anyway, sunny, we met with Sunnyside, and Ashley's here to talk about that, so I won't take away her, her thunder for that. But we, the one thing we did find out is the state has increased funding. They're going to increase funding by twelve dollars and thirty-five cents per day, per resident, which amounts to approximately nine, nine thousand dollars per month. So, that's huge. That's a big, big step for, because they haven't, actually, correct me, there hasn't been funding increase for quite a long time. Yeah. So, that's a big deal. And there's another funding increase. That's just a one-time deal. They're going to do a, it's a split payment. They're going, going to give thirty-nine, grant thirty-nine thousand dollars per bed, plus two hundred and twenty-five thousand total, or a grand total of three hundred and forty-two thousand, but it'll be distributed in two payments, August first of this year and August first of next year. That, that's correct, too. Yep. So, that's a big deal for Sunnyside. That's huge. And it's nice to see the state supporting that, nursing homes also. And as a result, we were able, the board was able to approve, the Sunnyside Board able to approve salary increase or pay increases for the employees. So, now their wages should be about in the middle of comparable nursing homes instead of towards the bottom. So, that's a, that's a good positive thing for, for them, too. I also had a Historical Society meeting, and the grand opening for the historical, for the museum is being pushed back to July. Oh, I gotta, I can find, I can't remember the exact date, but it'll be advertised. It's July fourteenth or somewhere around there. It was going to be June twenty-second because, but because the parking lot is not going to be done, they're not going to have the grand opening until later in July. Also, Becky Mitchell, the executive director, has explored how to, she can get more employees by offering more benefit incentives. And that's that. And then we had a transit meeting. The rides have increased drastically. April, they went up thirteen percent, and May, as Kevin has projected, they go up to eighteen percent. So, they, they should be moving into the highway building probably sometime in July. They want to be vacated by, what was August first, Pat? Is that right? Yep. So, and then, then, then everything will be transferred over to the state, they'll pay the state off, then we'll figure out what we're going to do with that facility. And I'll skip around here a little bit. I went to, we had a DAC meeting at the Holiday Inn. It was our annual meeting. And the big thing that came out of that is I guess they're, they've hired, they've hired, she's hired two new employees, three new employees, and she's also has, we have four, they're getting four new clients, which is good. So, the membership is, is increasing at the DAC. I think it's going in the right direction. So, hopefully that works out good. Had a Partnership for Health meeting, and basically Partnership for Health is our local health organization with four counties, Wilkin, Clay, Becker, and Arshale. And so, they talked about how, how there's going to be a nonprofit dental clinic in Frazee. It's going to be run by Northern Dental Associates. It's a, it's for, it's for people that, you know, can't afford to go to the dentist, basically. And, and they really believe, and it is a big deal, that all, not only health is mental health and physical health, but also, you know, your teeth. So, that's a big deal for them. And then, we had, we had a short presentation on WIC. If you don't know what WIC is, it's Women, Infants, and Children Uh, if you don't know what WIC is, it's Women, Infants, and Children Nutrition. Um, and then there was a big hot discussion about VHR, which is Vacation Home Rentals. It's a big issue in Otter Tail County. Um, in Becker County, our guidelines are, we go, we go by the state guidelines for food, beverage, and lodging. In Otter Tail, Wilkin, and Clay, they use this model from the Partnership for Health to do their rate. So, we, it really doesn't, I mean, what they're talking about may affect us somehow, but it doesn't affect us financially the way they have them set. So, anyway, the state also increased funding for local health organizations. Um, so with this increased funding, they, uh, are excited about that. Um, unfortunately, they're not gonna get, they're not gonna get the funding or know what it really is going to be until September, so their budget's going to have to be done before that, so it may not change until the next year of how much it'll help them, but that, that, it's gonna be a big, big deal, anyway. I think that's about it.
Yeah, thanks.
I'll stop talking.
I had quite a few committee meetings, but, uh, Highway Sheriff and so forth are on the agenda today, so I won't touch on that. Pelican River Watershed, uh, Phase Two of the Rice Lake Project north of town will be left in July with the completion in two thousand twenty-four. And there's a joint agreement with Cormond and Becker County, County S W C D to hire staff to help out for permitting and so forth, monitoring permits that'll be kinda shared with, can be shared with all entities there, so. Public Works Building, it's in its final stages, a few touch-ups, and Jim will discuss, uh, what we're looking after, probably ribbon gunning, open house, uh, winning on his agenda today. So, it's looking very well. The parking lot is paved, so, uh, fuel systems go online, I think, June seventh, so that's coming up. At the airport, and just the highlights there, the, the big mower purchase is gonna be put on hold, uh, to kinda wait for MINDOT funding to help for the purchase. Uh, the parking lot, new fuel system, starting here mid-June, along with the life-length helicopter parking area in the final phase. And then they're looking at adding anywhere from six to twelve T-hangers, multiple funding sources, anywhere from twenty-three out to two thousand twenty-four. I had, uh, Prairie Lakes Minnesot Solid Waste, uh, everything's up and running good, they're all burners, very little downtime. And we had a discussion on the ESF testing funding, that's quite a bit, it's been in the news and kinda hesitated. Originally, our share would be fifty thousand, but there's some of the big players are on their own, so it could run up to ninety thousand, but I think we're still gonna move forward with the testing because if we wait, it could get a lot more expensive, so that'll be another decision coming up for us. Other than that, like I said, the Highway Sheriff's and on their agenda, Richard.
I had N R M and our, uh, the shelter, we're just about done with the plans for the shelter out there, Dunton Locks. Uh, and it says the tram will be ready by the weekend. Was it ready?
It's been operating for two weekends.
How's that going? Did you go in it?
No, no, I haven't been over there, but, uh, everybody says it's good update and they're very happy. And there's about a few thousand dollars of donations are get raised to help more than cover the repair or so.
Yeah, that's, that was, I was really glad to hear that, so. Uh, the Nats are looking at a new dock, uh, for Big Elbow Lake there. And then I had environmental, and our environmental building is almost ready to go. And we're looking at buying an eighteen thousand gallon propane tank for that, so we can take a transport load at one time and quite a bit of savings there. That tank will actually pay for itself, I would, I would guess, in less than ten years and, and when you, when you can have eighteen thousand gallons on hand, you can get through the winter real easy without any, you know, upcharges and fuel. So that, I think that's a really good thing.
It, it is a used tank we're looking at that's here locally.
Yeah, it came off a turkey, it's coming off a turkey farm that's north of here. It's a nineteen sixty-nine, but actually propane tanks are, yeah, there, there's pressure inside, so they don't rust from the inside and, and the outside looks really good, and so, yeah, it's, they're gonna put all new valves and stuff in it, so it'd be a good deal for us if we, if we do do it.
Another big savings along with that, Richard, is filling our smaller propane tanks that operate porkloaves and crack devils and all that.
That's right, everybody will be able to get propane there. Not you people for your barber, uh, everybody else. That's all I got.
I, I got, I got a date on that grand opening for the museum is July seventh from four to six P M. So that's the new date, so hopefully I'll see all you there, right?
Well, Becky will send a...
Oh, yeah, she'll send out, yeah, she'll send out me. And then I did forget one thing about Fair Board. So, I just have one, one comment on the Fair Board meeting is they, uh, they, Steve Joy used to have sentenced to serve. People help do his, do his mowing and do, you know, work, whatever work he does. Um, so right now, currently, they don't have anybody to mow their fairground property, which isn't, it's not that they can't mow it, they just don't have any equipment because they've never mowed it. They've always had the county, somebody, the county's always helped out with that. And then also, the sentenced to serve people also took, took their garbage and recycling away, too, during the fair, so. I just brought that up because maybe, maybe there's some options we could have to, to help or...
Well, we had that discussion with Sheriff a little bit, and we're probably even looking at, uh, part-time summer person to help, so, a good change.
Perfect, yeah.
But right now, it's just a one-man show.
Yeah, yeah.
He's got a lot of stuff to cover.
He's got a lot, yeah. That's it, that's all I got.
Good, thanks for the updates. Uh, moving on, any appointments? Nothing? County Administrator's report.
Yeah, I'll just be brief on that report section. Um, as far as the Highway Committee is concerned, I'll just remind the board, there's a, we have a thirty-day lease where we have to give notice, and so the expectation is, is, uh, we'll give notice probably July first if everything works out, the auction gets done and, and everything is ready to move. You know, with the new building, it's gonna be a little different than the previous building because we'll have, we'll have some other, uh, departmental units in their transit being in there. So we are gonna schedule a, schedule a meeting with, um, uh, stakeholders, meaning the supervisors, because there's gonna be a new, a new bargaining unit introduced to that building. We wanna make sure we understand roles and responsibilities, so I'll be organizing that meeting here next week, uh, with those stakeholders. Uh, legislative update, um, a lot of things occurred at the state level and we're gonna give you a full review here on the twentieth, but I wanted to touch on a couple of things. Um, uh, probation, uh, Brian Rubenstein, who, who is asked to come on June twenty is to review, um, some of the legislations, uh, legislative items that occurred in probation. Um, there are some real positive things that have occurred that are going to help the county's budget as we move forward, and, and some of that is in probation, uh, but there's been certainly some changes, uh, in, um, paid medical leave, which, uh, Carol will be discussing later, um, with relate, uh, bargaining unit responsibilities and relationships with bargaining units. Um, monumental surveying, I have Josh Pfeffer, the county surveyors here, and, um, briefly, when, uh, if the board considers appointing him, we're gonna talk a little bit about that, uh, but it's, there's a lot of work that got done and we're just getting our arms around it. We're gonna give you a full summary, uh, on the twentieth, but, um, Brian, um, Rubenstein, of course, as you know, uh, the head of probation, probation moved out of this building. Um, he does feel that, um, because of some of the investments that are occurring, it's, it's gonna help, um, them make some changes that, again, will benefit the county's bottom line. So, uh, he would like to present that to you on the twentieth, so I told him I would not steal his thunder and he will do that on the twentieth. Um, Becky Mitchell is also asked to meet with the board on the twentieth as well, uh, just to give an overview of what's happening with the building, but also, she also has a funding request as well, so she'll be scheduled, uh, also on the twentieth. Uh, and that's everything I have, uh, just on my report.
All right, thank you. Uh, the Events Committee, will we touch?
Yeah, yeah, and that's, uh, page eleven. I'm gonna hand that over to, to, to Peggy here because she's on the Events Committee. Uh, but just to remind the board, you did approve the idea or the concept of doing a summer picnic, and so we are now bringing that summary to you, so there's a brochure on your packet on page eleven. But I'd like Peggy to talk a little bit about, um, what's gonna occur on the twentieth. With, with board approval, so.
So, on the twentieth, uh, we met the Events Committee a couple of weeks ago and decided that we wanted to do a picnic and we wanted to do them at various buildings, um, because it's hard for a lot of people to come to one building, especially, um, like Human Services and the highway. Um, so, for between lunch hours of eleven-thirty and one-thirty, we're gonna do a picnic and the Events Committee is gonna provide the pulled pork, the chips, and the buns. And employees can bring a dish, and when they bring a dish, they get their name put in for a raffle and there will be a gift card at each, um, facility that we do it at. And, um, we would like the board members to participate and, uh, you can divvy up and if somebody go to each building or something, we just think it'd be a good way for, for us to enjoy the summer and meet the new people because we have new employees and meet somebody other than just the people in your office. So, I'm excited because I like eat, so it'll be fun, I think, so.
Yeah, thank you.
And the cost, again, is being funded through the account with the Events Committee, so there's no funding request. Um, certainly, we could assign each, a commissioner to each building, there are five buildings, but you certainly can, can wander into each building as well, so it'll be up to you. Um, but certainly each building will have its own potluck, um, for you to attend. So if you want, as a commissioner, five different meals, you know, you've got the opportunity to do that, but I'll leave that up to you. But does the board have any questions on the, the event?
Okay, oh, super.
Thank you.
Yep. And then just moving on, uh, on page twelve, uh, Commissioner Oaks, and we have the budget timeline for your consideration. Excuse me, we put this together, uh, around June, uh, just to give an overview for the board and the public, the steps of the process for budget review. So, the plan is, is to have a legislative discussion, uh, next week to tell you how that is going to affect the budget positively or, uh, also negatively. So we'll do that full overview for you on the twentieth. Um, we will then print out budget worksheets for department heads and will include not only their input for two thousand twenty-four, but we want them to do historic trend analysis, so there'll be a series of columns from previous years, their budget versus actual. Uh, and they start that process and working with administration and, um, and we will present those publicly over a, a period of time. Um, ultimately, uh, the board, the board's buy-in is really critical, so there will be some questions that will be sent to you as commissioners as we kick this off, to make sure that we're understanding what your priorities are. Those will be discussed publicly, uh, but we'd like some individual input from you, and so you'll be getting a survey here, uh, shortly. But it all culminates after a series of department meetings and budget, uh, public budget review meetings, uh, for financial committee review and setting the preliminary maximum levy that'll occur on September nineteenth. Uh, after that is set, you spend another few months, uh, really making the budget as efficient as we can, and again, having public meetings with the board, but also individual departmental meetings. And it culminates into a public hearing on December fourteenth and finally certifying the budget on December nineteenth. So, um, we're interested for your buy-in. Uh, this isn't an official timeline yet, we can change it or modify it, but we do think, based on the statutory requirements we have, it's a robust set of, um, steps and, um, and, and the timeline, like I said, meets the statutory guidelines for our preliminary, uh, hearing and also certifying our budget. So, I guess I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Well, I see, we have to set the maximum on September nineteenth.
Correct, yeah, preliminary maximum, yes.
Preliminary, yeah. We can't go above it, but we can...
Could always go below, yeah. And that would include the EDA levy as well, because you can keep in mind the EDA levy is, is separate. The one thing I am gonna bring to the board, and I wanted to wait till five of you here, is, um, last year I had presented the idea of doing a capital improvement plan, that's a five-year plan that, um, documents any, all the assets you have over five thousand dollars and when they need to be replaced, when they need to be fixed or repaired. So, so essentially, uh, replacing a roof would be a capital improvement, buying a car, um, would be that. Uh, Minnesota State statute doesn't require that you do a capital improvement plan, it recommends that you do. And we did review something last year and we had Bruce Kimmel with Ellos and Associates present some ideas. The board wasn't interested at that time to consider a five-year plan, but I'd like to revisit it since we have new commissioners and see if the board sees now that there might be some value. What it does do, it, it will, the, the big result will be, when you certify the budget here at the end of the year, um, you've got a series of funds that you approve and the levy dollars you put in each fund. If you had a capital plan, you would have a capital fund and there'd be levy dollars that'd be put in there, but all these equipment and, and vehicles and stuff, instead of being in the operating budget, it would be in the capital plan. So it makes the operating budget much more efficient, uh, all this equipment that is focused on the plan and, and it's a five-year plan that you review every year and, and you have a public hearing on it, and so the public can, can provide input as well. So, um, we do think it's a best practice approach, but, um, so we'd like to at least introduce that to the board to see if there's interest. That's all I have.
Do you need a motion to approve the timeline for the budget?
Um, I don't, but the board is, is supportive of it. I, I wanted to give you time to look at it and come back with it. I, um, this is a timeline the staff has, but we just wanna make sure the board's supportive of it and you didn't have any questions.
It's pretty much, uh, outlined from last year.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Looks good to me.
Agreement with Sunnyside.
Yeah, and I'm just standing out, uh, if you wanna take one and pass it on, um, uh, Sunnyside, um, a contract with Minnewaska Management Group. As you mentioned, Ashley McNally is here, she's the executive director over at Sun... And she certainly can answer any questions that we have, but this has been a process that the, that we've talked to the board about. It started with us advertising, as you know, Ekumen is leaving, um, and providing management services to Sunnyside, and so the board approved going out for advertisements, and we, we did that through the paper and the website, and we sent, uh, proposals out to a number of companies. And it culminated into a meeting with a number of vendors to ask questions and then finally submitting proposals. Uh, Sunnyside reviewed those proposals in May, and they've recommended Minnewaska Management Group, uh, to take over those management services. Uh, Minnewaska, um, just sent us a contract here on Monday, so this has been sent to the county attorney for review. Uh, we've done some small edits to it, but it certainly meets the requirements of the RFP that was submitted. Uh, but what we are looking for is, we certainly want to take the time to make sure it's a contract that passes legal muster for our county attorney. So what we're hoping, uh, and we're asking the board is to give us authorization to, uh, to, to, well, the board to approve this contract, but with authorization, uh, for the Sunnyside Commissioners that sit on the committee, as well as the county attorney, to make the appropriate edits, to make it a final document and to allow signatory by the vice chair here this week, so that we could initiate that contract. What we wanna do is, we want a good thirty to forty-five days so Minnewaska can transition, you know, from Ekumen to Minnewaska, so that they can, um, come on board individually, although they'll be on board once we sign this, but Ekumen will be exiting at the end of July. And so we want a good transition. Ekumen is very motivated to make sure it's a positive transition, uh, but since we just received it Monday, uh, that's why we're asking for that authorization to sign that contract, but, uh, to make those edits, um, um, in case the county attorney or Commissioner Meyer, Commissioner Nelson have any additional feedback. And then, of course, we will bring the final product back to you signed, uh, but we would like your permission to be able to move forward with that.
Motion to move forward?
Yep. Do you want us to list everything out, uh, vote, uh, yeah, we got it.
Just the motion, dude.
Yeah, I'll second.
Has outlined.
Sounds outlined, yeah, I second. Or I make a motion, sorry.
Second?
I'll second it.
Second by Eric?
I wanna do both.
All in favor, or any discussion or questions for?
Did you have anything, Ashley, at all?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What was current?
I, I'd like to say one thing, I'd just like to thank Ashley for all the work she's done, getting this set up and, and getting everything going and finding out, you know, finding, helping us, helping us that don't know a lot of what to do and so, like, thank you, Ashley.
And I can continue if you'd like, Chair.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, Point County Surveyor, that's on page thirteenth, the statute is on there. Uh, last year, there was a one-year appointment of, of, uh, Josh, uh, Pfeffer to be our county, excuse me, to be our county surveyor. And, um, so I listed the statute in there so you could appreciate the requirements in appointing, um, a county surveyor. Uh, this email that was handed out to you, uh, came from, uh, Josh. It outlines the work that he would perform, it's also... It's also making a request on on the term and the hourly rate and, again, the services that would be performed. We certainly have inquired with Josh in a meeting, both the county auditor, treasurer, and I had a meeting with Josh just to make sure we were meeting the statutory requirements to having an appointed county surveyor. And he's also acknowledging that he certainly meets that role here at the end on the qualifications. There is some bonding that needs to take place, some other statutory steps that we have to follow. But at this point in time, what we are looking for is the board to appoint Josh to a to a four-year term. But you but you do have the ability to set it at a different term, but normally it's a four-year term.
I I prefer the four-year terms and not doing it every year or so. Any questions?
What was the hourly rate that he'd been paid for the last year?
Yep. So just to have some for you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Richard, appoint Josh Pfeffer to county surveyor position. I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Carrie.
And Commissioner, with your permission, could Josh just come up very briefly? Since he's here, I want him just to talk a little bit about one of the legislative things that have occurred that may affect monuments. So. Go ahead, Josh.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I don't know much about it yet. I got mail in. Always. I heard this grant and set it up. A lot of other counties do this. Our eighty acres. Then you hire a private and there hasn't been very many of them that have been documented. Here's thing called the certificate of government corner that can get filed basically history on it. Some souls are filed, you need a surveyor, I go on and find something out there. And so other counties have already implemented something. They'll do, hire me as a surveyor, and I file these things, the county would reimburse them a particular fee for each individual corner. So this grant would help with that. You could do it the same way where they submitted the corners, I checked them, and then we reimbursed them. Or I did talk to Otter Tail County, and they're kind of thinking about setting it up where the county board picks, okay, we want to do Detroit. So we got a two hundred thousand dollar grant. We're going to hire a survey firm to strictly survey Detroit township or Lakeview township or wherever, something that's a little more populated. So that's really all I know right now. I'm kind of waiting to hear all the specifics, but like I said, there is a bunch of money out there now that could potentially help the public. So something I thought.
Thanks for the update. Any other questions?
So is that something we need to apply for now?
Yeah, you don't have to apply for it, but I don't know all the facts yet.
Okay.
They did say that they're hoping to have everything out by July first.
Okay. Okay, so will that come back to the board then? Or will you bring? Yep, okay.
We'll need your permission to apply for the grant, Ben, so you will become that part. I thought just early information might be helpful.
Thank you.
What? Can we make, can we give them permission now to apply for the grant?
You certainly can. I mean, we're waiting for the application, you said July first, but
I'm just thinking that
the board's interested, yeah, that's completely fine.
I'm just thinking that if it's June now and if it comes July first, we might not have enough time to officially approve it, so.
Go ahead, make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Not bad, because it's already
Yeah, it's already part of it now.
Oh, it is, oh, okay.
No, no.
I'll make that motion, yeah.
Motion by Dave, I have a second to move forward to applying to Erica.
I'll second, yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie. Yeah, that's it, Pat? Final answer, Mary. Find my notes.
Good morning. The first item I have is I'm requesting a motion to approve regular claims auditor warrants in over ninety days.
Motion by Richard, I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
There are no licenses today, so the second item I have is approval of the April cash comparison, sales tax and investment summary reports.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Erica.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Any questions, discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Carrie.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning, please.
Good morning. The first item I have today is the Becker County Public Health Corps amendment. So it extends our Public Health Corps member partnership agreement for another year through July thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. The few changes are listed in this amendment, just some minor details. And it has been approved by the county attorney, and we're fine with all the with the few changes here.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments.
Motion by Erica to approve the Health Corps amendment.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Any questions, discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Hearing none, Carrie.
And the second and last item are claims for human services, public health and transit.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
Motion by Erica.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? Nope, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close. Carrie, thanks.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning. I have several items, but I think it'll be quick. The first thing I just wanted to highlight for, just to put on your radar, it's, it'll be coming in the future. But Minnesota did pass the paid family medical leave. And just a couple of high points that'll start in January of two thousand twenty-six. It very much broadens the definition of family. And then it's it's being funded and obviously through the state. And then eventually it'll come back around and be funded similar to unemployment. So I just wanted to put that and, you know, we'll be looking at that. It's a state-run program, so everything will filter through the state and then back through the county. We're not really exactly sure how that will all look, but it's something that, again, is in the works, so. Questions about that before I move on?
So that doesn't start until, nothing, nothing starts until twenty twenty-six?
Correct. Correct. Their, the funding is there as I understand it. They're going to be hiring staff at the state to run the program, but that's, that's where it sits. But it won't go into effect technically for until twenty twenty-six.
Is that when the contributions start also?
I believe that those also start in twenty twenty-six. The next item I have is a modification of the catastrophic leave bank, which should have been in your packet. As we are settling on contracts, I've asked for a modification in the language. I believe it's at the top of page five, I added letter D.
Page thirty of one seventy-five.
Oh, yeah, I forget, sorry. Forget you have the different pages. So just to allow, once the cap is hit by those that this affects, that their half of their overage over nine sixty can be then contributed to the catastrophic leave bank. Because right now the language only allows for vacation time. So I would like a motion for that, please.
I'll make that motion. Go ahead, Erica.
You motion, I'll second.
Motion by Dave. Erica.
Motion by Richard.
That's what I thought. I think, any discussion, comments? If that's where?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
All right, my next item is I just wanted to provide an update. We are, again, working diligently, getting the job descriptions updated. Some departments have completed those tasks, others are in knee-deep in it, if you will. I've assisted, as has been requested to, you know, when there's been questions. So, you know, coming up into, up into June here, we probably will set, you know, a final end date where we want all of those completed. We have gotten back some preliminary information on the market study for this. So it's all rolling in the in the direction that we want it to.
They're pretty good buy-in by the employees to get it completed?
From what I've heard, you know, some are, you know, not probably trying to use the old job description without some updates. So we've, you know, went back to the department heads and and made some suggestions and really wanting them to, you know, go through that questionnaire also, because what I've told department heads is that that may capture other additional information that may be pointed for when we're looking at these positions, because we really want it to reflect what the employees are doing so that we have the accurate information. Also, there is a PowerPoint that was originally given with a really a high overview of the jet system and the system that we're we're moving to of how they actually do and decide what jobs are worth. If the council is interested in that, I I can certainly forward that to you. Also, just to put it on your radar, as we progress here, Mark Goldberg is the main gentleman that I'm working with on this project. And it may be advantageous in the future for him to come to the board and and as we progress through this process to give the board updates as we go as well. Any questions before I move on? All right. One thing I wanted just to, as we've been attempting to fill truck driving positions that require that CDL training, things were modified in two thousand twenty-two where people, in order to obtain those licenses, have to go through coursework and it's quite costly. So it's really come to our attention that we may need to be, and we've been getting a lot of information and partnering with the the local college here and really taking a look at how we can, as a county, attract good employees into those positions. But what that may mean, what that probably is going to mean in the future, is that there's going to need to be some funding available to with hire of new employees to then have them go through the training. And then also on the backend, looking at how we would write, you know, letters of hire and how we would, if they didn't stay a certain amount of time in those positions, that then that would be, you know, paid back by that particular employee. So I I've gotten some input from our, one of our labor attorneys of how that could look and and making sure that that's what it should be.
There is a federal law that came down to
That's correct.
So it's really cumbersome.
And it's, it is quite costly. I know at least one or two of you asked me, like, if you have a, just for an example, if you have a new employee that wants to become a truck driver that really doesn't have the permit, doesn't, hasn't pursued any of that, you know, the total cost of that is about fifty-two hundred dollars. So it's, it's very expensive.
And it takes some time.
And it takes some time, roughly about a month of coursework, full-time. So one hundred and sixty hours of class time.
Is that something that will be, sorry, I have my gun. Is that something that will be looked at in this comp and class study or comp and salary study? That, you know, that's, that's like an additional requirement. So is that going to be considered in the job description?
It would be included in that job description because a lot of our job descriptions right now are indicating that they have to have it or have the ability to obtain it. So that is, I mean, a requirement for the job, so that would be included.
But that would be considered when, when determining a wage, I guess, is more what?
Yes, yes, yes.
My thoughts is right now, CDL drivers are a premium. Big demand for them out there. And once you have that, you, you have to do a lot to protect it. A lot of federal regulations and stuff, so.
Yeah. And just while I'm on the the comp and class study, I just wanted to inform the all of you. I know two of you sit on the the benefits committee, but we did go, I did write an RFQ for a broker, a medical broker, and we did have three responses. So those responses and the information that they were able to provide will be reviewed by the benefits committee. So that process has been completed. The goal of that was for that to go out in May and that we would start reviewing here in June. So that's also on on task, so. The last item I had that was an addition to the agenda is that we did have a resignation by our payroll specialist. And as many of you know, we are in the very smack dab in the middle of implementing the UKG HR system as well as the payroll system. So I, she is a critical employee to this process and moving this process forward and has been really on the front line of implementing all of this. So I would ask that the commission approve, and she has agreed, we're working out the details of what it may look like for up to sixteen hours variable part-time for her into the transition, as well as whomever we hire in that position, that she would then be available for some training to that person just to ensure that we're moving forward with this project. Because, again, I I truly believe it's critical.
Yeah, we discussed this yesterday in finance, and we need additional help from her to transition.
Yeah.
Yeah. Really affect the whole system, so.
Yep. So what I would propose is I did a very quick cost analysis and, and, you know, it wouldn't be by days. I think we would really be looking at hours. And again, we're in the preliminary stages. The supervisor was out on vacation, so I haven't had a good chance to sit down with her, but I really want to define the duties of what she would be responsible for as well as then what others in the office then would be responsible for. So what I would propose, and again, if it needs to be modified, I'll bring it back, but into probably September, by the time I get something on board through the summer. And the cost of that, if she were to go to a part-time position at thirty dollars an hour, it would be roughly five thousand and some cents. So that's what I would ask.
I have one question.
Yep.
When she does this, would, with the new person, that's, we're going to hire a new person to replace her?
That's correct.
Okay, so when she does this, she obviously has another job, probably. What, how, how is that going to factor in?
I've, I've spoken with her and it's flexible. And with payroll, she knows what that entails. So she, she would be able to do a workaround with whatever other job she takes.
And she could do this consulting from home, from a lot of it, except
I would say ninety percent of it, until we get to the point where we're training a new person and the understanding would be then she'd have to be on site assisting with that. But again, just to ensure that there's a lot of money we've invested in this program. And I, I, again, I can't say that any more than how critical she is to this project.
Any other questions or should I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve the sixteen, up to sixteen hours or whatever.
I said, I said up to sixteen hours a week, and if it needs to be modified as we, my plan is to put it all in writing. So we know exactly what, what she's responsible for.
Consulting up to sixteen hours.
Up to sixteen, yep, yep, I'll make that motion.
If I may, I'm sorry. If I may, really, the term is it's going to be a variable part-time position, not a contracted position. I just want to make that clear.
I'll make that, yeah. I'll make the motion to up sixteen hours a week for variable part-time position to help with payroll. Stop.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Erica. Further discussion, questions? No, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close, same side?
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thanks.
Thanks, Carrie.
Jim.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning, Jim.
Um, few items for consideration from highway. The first one is a bid award. This project is a, a, a bridge redecking project in the city of Fraser. We only received one bid. Um, the bid is from a reputable contractor. The bid was, uh, significantly over the engineer's estimate. I think when we look back at our estimate, um, and looking at the specialty of the work and the smaller quantities, um, we understand prices are generally higher. Uh, still, it looked not quite palatable. So we, um, asked the contractor to eliminate, uh, the patuminous paving work in that project, which was significantly over what, uh, pricing is about ten times or, or more than what you would pay for asphalt. And they agreed to do that and that essentially reduces the contract about forty-three thousand dollars, which then makes us, um, a palatable project. Um, and I don't think we could rebid it and get anything better. And even if we delayed it to next year, I, I think this is a good contract and a good contractor and a reasonable price considering those, uh, specialty works in the small quantity. So we're recommending award, uh, to PCI contract, uh, in the amount of, uh, two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars and thirty-two cents.
The, Jim, the pavement will be more or less handled in-house by the department?
We will essentially, it will just be patchwork, uh, at each end of the bids where the transition from the concrete duct to the patuminous, uh, we'll just, you know, make that a small, um, removal and replacement. And we can do that either with our forces or hire somebody locally. Uh, then the following year, we do have, um, that road is being resurfaced in conjunction with work, uh, with the city doing some sewer work and, and things like that as well. So we'll be able to, you know, finish it then next year.
A motion to approve, uh, resolution one A.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Richard.
I'll second it.
Second by Dave. Any other questions, discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Carrie.
Next item is a quote, um, award. Uh, we're looking to, um, as you know, our new facility, our old highway facility where it's, has been sold. And part of that purchase agreement is to remove the underground fuel tanks. Uh, we went out and got quotes. We solicited from three vendors. We got two responses back and we're going with the firm TPEC. Uh, they're out of Duluth. They're an environmental, um, firm that specializes in this work. And we're recommending, uh, award to them in the amount of twenty thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
Were they gonna do the actual excavating and stuff themselves or are they gonna hire somebody local?
They're hiring somebody local to do that work.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve the tank removal with, uh, TPEC?
I'll, I'll, I'll move to that.
Second? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Carrie.
Our next item is, uh, we have a request to dispose of property. When we move from the new, old building to the new building, there's gonna be several things we don't bring with us, such as office furniture, desks, cabinets, old obsolete parts and things. So we're requesting to, uh, dispose of that property through an online auction. We're gonna be working with McLaughlin Auctioneers. Um, they've done this work with other, uh, local agencies like Morehead and, um, Fargo, uh, they're out of Fargo. So, um, we're recommending, uh, or we're requesting a motion for us to do that. In this process, we're gonna be looking to other departments if they have other things that they would like to dispose of that they're not using. One being transit has, when they move over, they have a few things that they will not be needing. So they'll be adding those to the auction. And I think we'll be reaching out to other departments as well to essentially assemble all that and that'll be stored in the old highway building. So people will be able to come and see it during that essentially two-week, um, period when there's a live auction going on.
And this will be advertised?
Advertised.
Couple of weeks in the paper, locally and on the web.
Correct.
And probably even on the radio. Good. A motion to approve sale of old properties, property?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Richard. I'll second that. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close? Carrie.
Last, our next item for consideration is a purchase request. Um, in the new building, um, we inadvertently missed, uh, office desk or work surfaces in the mechanic's office. It was just an oversight based on the plans and none of us caught it. Uh, so we are requesting, uh, to purchase those desks now to be installed by Cooper's Office Furniture, uh, in the amount of, uh, three thousand, sixty dollars and twenty-two cents.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
My Richard, second?
I'll second it.
My Dave?
It'll come out of the special general, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Carrie.
And finally, uh, discussion, uh, we're looking to, um, host an open house at the new building facility. We are looking at that week of, uh, June nineteenth. Um, in particular, probably those three days in the middle of the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Uh, one idea, uh, being we're would like to see if you'd like to entertain, uh, on a Tuesday. If it could work within the board schedule, we could have the board go out, uh, during the meeting at the end. And I understand you have something at the end further to, to, to fit in there. Um, but that would be one opportunity. And then that evening, um, we would have the public open house. Um, if that doesn't work and you wish to all gather at an evening time, then we would pick that date and then, you know, essentially approve that as a special meeting and then advertise that accordingly.
Are we thinking the next meeting on the?
It's on the twentieth, yeah.
Is that the same day as the picnic?
Yes.
That's the logistic issue that?
That's, that was, yeah.
But that still do well, but it's only defined for an hour and a half.
Yeah, it's from eleven-thirty to one thirty.
Oh, pretty. Should have been a real long meeting. We could, not gonna take half hour to run out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, it would be fine with the twentieth.
Yeah.
Yeah. Go without the twentieth?
Yeah. Be the most of that.
Jim, do you have a motion at all?
Um, I think it's, if that's just added to the board agenda at the time, I don't know that a motion is needed. Uh, I guess.
I guess.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. You're okay with that, Richard? No change? Put it right away?
Well, just push him off.
Okay. Sounds good.
And if you can't make it, you can, you know, go that evening at,
Yeah.
with two commissioners at a time.
Did they all, Jim?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Uh, we'd probably look at that.
And I was just gonna add something, uh, Kipshire, uh, Brooks says, um, you all can go there. I think you're, I think that works as a, of a joke, but you just can't talk about county business, so the, uh,
Yep.
Which we did at the jail. Shane.
Morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'll be presenting in place, uh, Sheriff Glander. He's away with all the other sheriffs getting educated today, so, uh, learning about all the wonderful things going on in the state of Minnesota and making sure they're up to date on everything. So, um, uh, first item that we have, uh, with the untimely passing of, uh, Dr. Thor's Guard, obviously left a hole in the community, but unfortunately left a hole in the sheriff's office also as he was our, uh, coroner. And so at this time, we don't have a coroner and the Ramsey County Medical Examiner's Office has agreed to contract with us in the interim to provide those coroner services. Um, there should be a contract in front of you, uh, listing basically their prices, their terms and whatnot. Uh, I believe it's been reviewed and put through all the committees. So we're looking for an approval to, um, enter into this agreement with them as a temporary, um, fix until, uh, the board decides if they wanna refill that position.
I'm making a motion to approve one B.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Uh, there, just a comment. There is one person that I think that has expressed probably some interest that would be qualified locally.
Good. And we've, we've had that discussion. We would like to see that position refilled and have somebody local that we can go to. Um, in the event that we wanna call somebody up to a scene or something like that, it, there is benefits to having that, that we have that one-on-one connection and it's, it's worked well, so.
You know, that person steps forward and we can revisit this at a later time.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie.
Item number two, um, we're, we're dealing with the same, uh, issues that, uh, everybody else across the nation is with, uh, vehicle purchases. Um, typically, we just go out for state contract bids and whatnot. We're actually still waiting for our vehicles from last year that we have bid on. Um, we're hoping to get those by the end of the year. Uh, but we also need this year's vehicles. Um, all of the bidding is closed for all of the major, um, manufacturing companies until this fall and we just need to move forward. So we had, uh, um, we searched out what we could find for police vehicles out on, on, uh, some of the different vendors across the state. And we did find five vehicles that we feel will fit our needs, uh, for this year. Um, so in front of you, there should be, uh, five different vehicles. Two of those are on state contract pricing. Those would be from North Country Chevrolet. Uh, they'd be for two Chevrolet Tahos. There's three other vehicles that are, um, out on the open markets. We had to get, um, second quotes for those. Um, two of those that are out of Carl Chevrolet in Iowa and the other ones out of, uh, Nelson Ford, uh, out of Fergus Falls. Um, we reached out for second quotes, but being the, um, the police vehicles are closed right now. Nobody else is able to get those other quotes from the, um, Ford Chevrolet and Dodge. So they looked locally and within five hundred miles, they could not find anything. And they basically for the competitive bid process said, we're not able to, nobody's gonna be able to bid these. So it's, it's basically the, the vehicles that we're able to find. And so, um, we feel that should fit the, uh, competitive bid process if there's nothing else available. Uh, there is some equipment down there also, um, computers and docs, which would be, uh, budgeted. All this stuff should be budgeted. It's well within budget. Uh, we've got the total cost there. We do not have the police equipment to go in the vehicles, light bars, um, cages, push bumpers, things like that. Uh, but our quotes for last year were roughly about sixty-six thousand. Um, it'll be probably slightly higher than that, but we've got a hundred and seventeen, uh, budgeted between those two. So we've got, what we feel is more than enough wiggle room to, when we come back, maybe, um, next meeting, I'm still waiting on those quotes, but we need to get these vehicles secured because they are, um, basically holding them for us at this time. And there's other agencies that are gonna snap them up if we don't take them. But, uh, we should be within budget for all that equipment and everything when it's, when they're complete package vehicles, so.
This is all pretty well hashed out the last couple of sheriff's committees and it's, it's unfortunate when you order vehicles and you don't get them for almost two years, but, um, which is the board, our motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve purchase.
Motion by Dave to purchase of five vehicles as listed?
Yep.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye? Close? Carrie.
And the last item in front of you, um, we are requesting some purchase of, uh, SWAT gear. Um, I think it was a couple of meetings ago, it was discussed to join the Hubbard Wadena SWAT team. Um, part of that is, uh, we need to upfit our, um, members with gear for that. Uh, we had what we thought was maybe some preliminary pricing based off of what, uh, Hubbard County, um, said that they had purchased for several years ago. Uh, it turns out prices are much higher. Um, so we felt it was best to come back to the board and discuss, um, what those equipment costs were gonna be per officer. And, um, um, now that we have accurate dollar amounts, you know, to get approval for that. Um, I've got Sergeant Dan May with me who's done a lot of the legwork on this to get those quotes secured and everything. Do you wanna speak a little bit to what it is and what, uh, what they've got for them?
Yeah, so on front, your front page, uh, kinda breaks it down from Keesler's is the twenty-nine thousand. Um, that's from state contracting pricing. Uh, the second quote was for items that were not on state contracts. So obviously I had to get two quotes. Um, Keesler's came in at seventy-eight, seven, and Strikers came in at seventy-eight, four. However, Strikers sent me an email, said he could not, uh, do apples to apples as he could not get rifles and/or the headsets, which is our communication with the other team members. Um, so that was about twelve thousand that they could not bid out. Um, so grand total is a hundred and eight for Keesler's, which is the low quote, obviously, if, uh, um, with that twelve thousand missing for those two items, Strikers would have been in the roughly a hundred and twenty thousand. Sold outfit, each deputy is about twenty-one thousand, seven hundred for what we need to, uh,
What is the monthly?
That's per officer, I'm sorry.
Approved before?
Um, a lot less, yeah. And that's the reason they're coming back. Uh, the, uh, I think, uh, my memory was your request was around thirty or forty thousand, if I recall, for everything. And, and with the competitiveness, the inflation, I mean, there's a whole lot of reasons this is more expensive. But much of it fits in the state bid system and, uh, um, and so it's, the price is the price at this time and.
And this funding was gonna come out of our?
This was always a special general, uh, revenue fund and, um, funding. It's just, um, they're coming back because it's higher than what you approved before.
A motion to approve the purchase of the SWAT gear is presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Richard. A second?
I'll second.
Erica. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close? Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you guys.
Steve? Can see you back there.
Morning, Mr. Chair, what numbers? I got a few things to go through this morning with you. Um, for Parks and Rec, we have a cross-country ski club three-year agreement with, uh, the DL Ski Club. In the past, we've granted them seventy-five hundred dollars a year. It's basically been a reen- uh, reimbursement for some of their expenses. And in our committee, we decided instead of going with one year to make it a three-year contract. And the way it's written is that that's a maximum that they can reimburse per year is seven, up to seven thousand, five hundred.
That's when they produce their receipts?
They do, right. It's reimbursable expense.
I'll make a motion to approve it, the agreement.
The three-year agreement at up to seventy-five hundred dollars a year?
Yep.
There's a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Carrie.
Second item is to purchase a dock that we're gonna place at the Big L Bowl Lake Public Access. Uh, we did receive quotes and just want the motion to allow us to purchase, uh, a dock for the amount of four, four thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. It's basically two sixteen-foot sections, four feet wide. It's got a plastic top on it, plastic lumber top.
At prices, for them to install it the first year?
Pardon?
That's installed the first year?
Installed, yeah.
Is it delivered or?
It's delivered.
Okay.
Well, it's, well, we'll have to pick it up and bring it out there, I'm sure of that. I don't believe it's, I don't believe.
Tell him he's gonna.
Yeah.
Delivered, installed the first year. A motion to purchase a dock of the rec fund?
Provided delivered. Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
My Dave, second by Erica. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close? Carrie.
The third item is a contract with Better Futures Minnesota to do mattress deconstruction. Uh, this is more of a pilot project contract. This is more of a pilot project contract, we're just getting into this, that was part of the agreement with the state of Minnesota when they gave us funding to help expand a recycling facility. Better Futures will do this for a rate of $8.33 per mattress. They'll break it down, the recyclable commodities and become Becker Counties and we'll market those. So this will take a little while to get off the ground, so this is a one-year contract and then after one year, we'll evaluate it and see how successful it is and where we want to go from there. Only question on this, there was a question on the insurance and the final language on the insurance, I got to get approved with the county attorney. I think we've got the language nailed down, that's, that'd be the only other change to that. Does anybody have any questions about the program or the contract?
And this, this project will be pretty much funded self-sufficient.
It's, it's self-funding, we charge more than that right now for mattresses that come in. And then also we would be billing that plus for other counties.
Oh, yeah.
So eventually this could become a regional facility for deconstruction.
Once they're all disowned, that all that stuff is recyclable?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Motion to approve the Better Futures mattress contract?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Richard.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. More discussion? Not all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Carried.
The third item is a contract with Paint Care. Paint Care is an, it's a national organization that in the past, when we disposed of our paints, it was through the MPCA. And now, and MPCA had a contract with Paint Care and now the, and the MPCAs removing themselves and it will be dealing directly with Paint Care. So really, nothing has changed, this is the same contract that we've had for a number of years. The only difference is, is that some of the reimbursement rates will be up. So, the way that it works right now is if somebody brings in a can of paint and we're able to turn it back and into the community where somebody can use it, we actually get reimbursed for that. If it's bad paint, we have to package it up and ship it out, Paint Care then covers the disposal costs, but they don't cover our labor costs necessarily. Any questions on the contract? And we need to designate who would sign this because it's through DocuSign, which my proposal is to have Pat sign that.
Yeah, the county board, you can authorize anyone to sign that, is it more efficient, are you getting those emails, Steve, or?
Yes, I do.
You could authorize Steve to sign it if the board wants to give that direction, just to make it more efficiently done.
Motion to approve that paint contract and approve Steve School this to sign?
I'll, I'm going Erica.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Erica, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Further discussion? Not all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Carried.
Thank you. And the last thing is approving a contract to do site prep on our, some of our forestry lands, we've got 91 acres. We were able to get a proposal from Future Forest Incorporated to do site prep, basically it's doing, putting down herbicide. And it's the only firm around that does this and that's a problem. In the past, they used to do, put down herbicide as well as do the site prep, which would be plowing and prepping it for seeding. But at this time, they wouldn't give us an offer to do the site prep, which is something that we may come back later this year with. But for this, right now, this would be just providing the herbicide.
That is for $14,754?
Correct.
Motion to approve the site prep?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Richard, I'll second it. Any further discussion? Not all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
So.
Morning.
Good morning. So, bringing forward for your approval to convert a part-time deputy recorder position to a full-time deputy recorder position. It just, I just got resignation last week, so it will be vacant after this week at that point. And so far, this last position has only been filled for exactly a year. And then the previous person was here two years and the one before that four, so it's just seeming that part-time is just not holding. You know, people in the position very, very well, so I'm hoping at this point, maybe a full-time position would be more attractive and retention for employees.
Are there other part-time positions in your?
I have one other part-time position. So, at this point, we have four full-time, including myself, and then two part-time. As of about nine years ago, we had six full-time and two part-time. So we, as people started retiring throughout the years, they just went unfilled. And then the staff was assuming responsibilities and taking those on, which that would be fine. Hopefully, at some point, we can do that again, but right now, everybody, four of my employees are all new. So, the longest they've been there is a year. They just aren't quite as efficient and they, still the learning curve of learning how to do everything, so there's a lot of work that still needs to be done.
So, would the part-time person now be the leading candidate to fill that position?
Most likely.
Because it takes a long time, a while to train them?
Yep, and I do know that the part-time person that is there right now is very interested in full-time and is looking for full-time. So, if she didn't get this full-time position, then I'm sure I will be losing that person too in short order.
Wishes of the board?
So would we then, if that part-time position would open, would we essentially just be making those two part-times, one full-time? Or would you be looking to?
I would be looking to at least hopefully try to fill that part-time person also, I'd like to fill that if possible.
So, so the two position, two part-time, which is an hour, 28 hours each?
Each, correct.
So then, would you look to have a part-time position for more than 16 hours or?
Preferably, if we could keep it at the 24 to 28, that would be ideal. I mean, I'll work with what I can, I don't know how attractive a 16-hour a week position would be. So, I know previously, about eight years ago, then those part-time positions were 24 hours each. And then, I think it was about seven or, six or seven years ago, then they changed them to 28.
I think if I could, Commissioner Oakeson, one of the unique things about Susan's department is the fact that there are segregation duties where certain employees can only do vital statistics, certain employees can only do passports they can't cross, so it, it's an additional challenge.
It's a confidentiality.
Yeah, for, to manage that department that another, another department doesn't have. And, and we did, and the other thing I would like to mention, Commissioner Oakeson, to the board is, we did reach out to the courthouse committee, we put an email out to them when we found out this had occurred. You know, Commissioner Meyer didn't respond, that he was, he was open to the idea for it to be considered at the board, we did not get a response from Commissioner Nelson. And so we, we understand this can be very delicate, we don't have all five commissioners here, so.
I did talk to him.
You did.
And he is supportive of it.
Oh, very, thank you, I didn't know that, I appreciate, well, that takes care of that, so. Yeah, good, good to know, so.
Yes, so there is that problem where only certain designated employees can do certified birth certificates and certified death certificates. And the other employees can do passports, so we have to keep that completely separated. And that is the unique challenge in our office, is I have to have enough staff that can do vitals and enough staff that can do passports. Otherwise, the closest passport facility, I believe, is 28 miles from here. So, that would reduce how many passports we can do for the public.
Wishes of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 1C.
I'll second.
Motion by Erica, second by Dave to make a full-time recorder position filled. Any further discussion? Not, all the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried.
Thank you.
Could I add one thing while you're here still, Susan? Susan brought to my attention that a long-term employee, elected county recorder, had passed away, did you want to talk a little bit about Darlene? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, just to recognize in the past, I mean, a long-term employee recorder, Darlene Maddable, I think she had been here 25 years or so, or longer?
I think it was 34, we figured out.
I know, it was a long time ago.
12 or 13 and she was here 21 years prior to being elected.
I think her obituary was posted in paper, but just want to acknowledge that and bring it forward, so.
Yes, she was an awesome person.
Yeah. Local. Yeah, Richwood.
Yeah, she's my mentor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since we're ahead, I'd like to make a request, we take like a four-minute break.
Four minutes, that's it.
Just, just to take a break too.
Yeah, yes, it's the.
If that's okay, Commissioner.
Yep, we got planning and zoning at 9:55, and it's 9:00.
Perfect, so we're back at the end.
I want to do better. Yeah, the recorder catches me and Mary catches me.
Ready? Kyle, planning and zoning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Planning Commission. Recommendations for your consideration this morning from May thirty-first. Uh, the first applicant, Richard and Darcy Strand, requested a change of zone from ag to residential with a recommendation to approve. Um, the second half of that application, a preliminary plat for eight residential lots will be going to Lakeview Township, um, next Monday evening.
And just kind of comment that first little survey that was sent out wasn't correct.
Right.
And that new one should take care of this, most of the city's concerns with right-of-way infrastructure, so.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, we need a, a four-fifths vote, uh, for a change of zone by ordinance, so if we could have you, um, vote as well, that'd be much appreciated.
Who do concur?
Well, you need a motion?
Need a motion to.
Did motion.
He did.
Motion to concur. I need a second.
I don't know all this language. I'm new to this.
I was confused, too, sorry.
Motion to concur, and I need a second.
I'll second that.
To approve the change of zoning, taken by Richard. Any further discussion? Not all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Gary.
Just a note on that for the record, that the ninety-two acres, uh, just immediately north of this property is planned for some high-density residential. We have quite a bit of conversation on change of zones. Um, all of this is ag and was previously farmed, but this is the city's growth.
This is, we're just acting on the change of zoning on this, and then it goes back to the township on the subdivision.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect.
Um, the second applicant, Metri Family Trust, requested a conditional use permit for mining operations. Uh, recommendation to approve, uh, with a stipulation of hours of operation from Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM, and no crushing.
What, what was the time length on?
Five years.
Five years, then the conditional use goes away?
Correct. They would need to renew, they would either need to renew or reapply.
I would like to change that to a four-year timeframe. I, I would add that, uh, make the motion to add that to the stipulations. Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Uh, I'm not, not that.
Um, my, my biggest question is, if, if, are we able to discuss it? Is, so it's, it's.
Is discussion the motion?
Discuss the motion.
No, I'm not discussing that motion. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion in a second, that's me.
That's to change the.
Timeline to four.
Time four.
Your duration of it.
Personally, I think four years is still too long. I think, in, in regards to this, this motion, we, we're interrupting a whole neighborhood for essentially four years, still.
It's never the interruption that people make it out to be.
Mm-hmm.
It's, everybody, it's just the end of the world. Really, it's not, especially if it's during the day. It's really not that, it, 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 it's just not. I have loaders, I have trucks. That highway is made for that. We all need this material, and the problem is, it's not everywhere. You can't just go everywhere and get sand, clean sand, so. That's, that's all I can say about it.
Does, uh, changing it to four years, with, does that increase the possibility of number of trips then during the day?
Certainly, it's, that's the other thing. I mean, when we always discuss that, I would say, of the, the gravel pits we've approved, um, and we have some in similar, I mean, I'm not gonna say identical locations, but Casey Clem has one next to Forest Hills. Um, I would say from all the ones I've seen, this is the most restrictive we've been on timelines and hours of operation. You're at eight to five, Monday through Friday. Um, but, again, if, to that, if you're limiting those hours and you're limiting that timeline, then he's gonna be in a bigger hurry to get it out of there.
Well, I just think shortening the timeframe does reduce some of the noise conflict and stuff, and it just probably move up your building plans a little sooner, so. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, call, call the question. All the papers say aye? Aye?
I, I, I.
So, um, so I'm here, I'm seeing two ayes and two nays. It fails. Um, and, uh, there could be another motion made if, if the board wants to make another motion.
What would make you guys happy with this?
I would, one thing I would like would be to, if, if we're going to reduce the years, and I think we need to reduce the amount too, so it doesn't so much, so it's not more of a, more of a busyness in the, in the timeframe. Does that make sense?
I, one, one thing I want to say is, I, I understand what they're doing in that they want us, just to sell the sand so that they can build, but there's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand tonne is, you know, if you figure twenty-five tonne as a semi-truck, that's ten thousand semi-trucks in five years. That's fifty-five trucks a, a week. That's eleven loads a day.
Well, one thing that people don't know is now we have more mound systems than ever. It used to be about twenty-five percent.
Mm-hmm.
Now it's eighty percent. That sand needs to come from somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't, we lost a bunch of it out here on County Six. The big pile there is going to North Dakota. We can't get it there anymore. And so, we're limited on where we can get it. And so, and I, there's just a lot to think about here, and, and, uh, it isn't just a sand pit, but.
One other thing, um, what was, I'm trying to think, I haven't heard this. I, I, I want, I, I, I'm in favor of somebody making money on their property, and, you know, I, I, I had two concerns, I have three, two concerns are the people that live there. That's a concern, but I don't know how much of a concern it would be. Um, and the, the amount of traffic with trucks going back and forth. The other, the third concern I have, and I don't know if this is a, is a concern or not, we, we did get an email yesterday, um, about a, the property, is it, did we get it yesterday, or did, when did we?
Last night.
Last night, contract for deed. Does that have any effect on, on, no, no effect at all? I, I just checking on that one. I didn't think it probably did.
I believe that wouldn't have any effect on a conditional use. That's more like a covenants. We don't deal with covenants or.
Correct. We don't recognize that.
Seller and buyer.
So, and, and going back, which, Mr. Chair, you could probably comment on it more, if you would, um, you know, the topography out there, it, it's very rapid. I mean, so, a twenty-foot average is, is probably not accurate, but trying to get an accurate number, I, you, you'd have to basically survey it with a topo and everything to get elevations, and that's just really not.
Oh, no, it's in.
Rational.
There's some pretty high knobs. If you go twenty feet down from that, you're okay.
Right.
For the lower spots, you wouldn't go twenty feet, and that's just common sense, where you're gonna stay, uh, minimum of three feet above a water table, hopefully a lot further than that.
Right, so the two-fifty is definitely the high-side number. I mean.
Yeah, I think, yeah, back there, you have two from, well, water, they commented on, uh, protecting the, the little wetlands that's in there, Ed. Yeah, I think the applicant's plan is to keep a good berm around that little wetland, so there's no runoff, and, and everything else, pretty much stay on the property, I believe so.
We, you know, we also did discuss this at the Planning Commission, and, I mean, Colin and I had a, a pretty deep conversation about it. To be completely transparent, if he, if he comes to me tomorrow and says, I'd like to, um, create a building site for my home and a barn, and I want to move fifty thousand yards, there's nothing preventing him from doing that. Absolutely nothing. Um, to say that a lot of these excavating companies are, and a lot of people bring up the sale of the material, well, a lot of these people are removing material and getting rid of that somewhere, and sometimes being paid for it. A lot of times, they're just gonna want to get rid of it, but there's not to say no one's ever sold any of that material they've taken. So, essentially, when we're looking at this, by putting these stipulations on here, it's the best-case scenario. Um, it's probably not understood by the residents around there, um, but there's ways for him to get that material out. Um, I know it was, there was comments in here, if he would be supplying any material to the State Highway Thirty-four project, and if he were to be, there would be no conditions required. Um, Mark Sand and Gravel, Anderson Brothers, any of those guys, they come into the community every year, and they mine material with absolutely no requirements.
No, no permits.
Right.
That is, uh, comment on that, too, Kyle brought up the Planning Commission, that we were just applied for land alteration permit over fifty cubic yards. No, nothing has been said. That's pretty much wide open then.
Right.
And I, and I, and I recognize.
Have a few more restrictions on it.
And I, and I recognize all that. My, wha- what we also talked about at the Planning Commission was if this was just, um, i- if this was not them leveling their land out to build a house, and this was really going to be a mining operation, it was said too, that we wouldn't even be having this conversation, that we would be, um, you know, we would be denying it, because it, this, what, the way it was presented at the Planning Commission was them, this is why they're doing it.
Right.
To, to, to create their, for their home, um, which I support, and I, and I understand, but two-hundred-and-fifty-five loads a week is, for five years, is a lot. And, and I can't support disrupting that community for that long at that amount. If we, if we could have a smaller amount, a smaller tonnage that could come forward, one of the things that I talked about at the Planning Commission also was what happens if they, they lose their land? And, and this then, you know, is potentially up for bid by another company, which I know you said, Kyle, is not likely, but not likely doesn't mean impossible.
No, but I mean, just.
Permit stay with just him, or?
No, it goes with the land, but I mean, going back to that twenty-six acres, that close to deal, they're, they're just Strata Corporation, Rock Ridge, Anderson, they're, they're not interested in four acres of sand. The people that are interested in this, again, hi- himself included, and on all of their other counterparts, almost all of them have a little pit run site just like this. Um, we approved one for Daryl Bergstrom, um, probably two years ago, on Southwest Hydeland. Um, I would say two hundred feet from a guy's front doorstep.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we did that with Casey Clem. Uh, all the Stingers have them. He has one. Um, it's not uncommon, and again, going, I, I understand, you know, the, the concerns about it transferring, but we've, we've went down the legal routes where we, we can't make it non-transferable. I've given it some thought after the meeting, and I just don't know how or what you would do there. Um, and, and Colin could correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't think he's capable of hauling fifty-five loads in a day. I, I.
If he's gonna make any money doing anything, he's not gonna be.
I, I don't want to discredit him by any means, but I just.
So then, so then, what I would ask is, then we have a more realistic number of what you could load out.
In a day.
Mm-hmm. You know, if that, if that's what, if that's what you're saying, well, this number isn't realistically, realistic for me to do, then, then we need to have a number that is realistic for you to do for us to look at.
Yeah, so again, like, when he comes in, a- a- and without, with being rational and saying, hey, Colin, go spend fifteen grand with Apex Engineering to, to topo your whole site, and give me an adequate number of yards. We're just, he's going out there, looking at elevations with a grade stick probably, and is like, okay, over here, it's this high down here. We averaged it. It's, it's high. Um.
He basically took the four acres of twenty-foot depth and, and has, and figured that tonnage would be yards and that.
Right.
At twenty feet, and you're not gonna get a full twenty feet on.
You're not getting a twenty-foot average there.
And I, I think from the conversation at the Planning Commission, we would probably have more support from the neighborhood if it was really more about what they need, and not just this, a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand tonnes, which is a lot. And if that's not really what they need, then let's.
Well, they're, they're.
Table it and reconsider it. I don't, I'm, I mean, what, whatever we need to do, but that.
There's really been some misrepresentation there, though. One of the letters we received last night wa- indicated there's sixteen million dollars worth of sand here, and that's just.
But I'm not even, that's not.
The numbers.
That's not even anything I'm thinking of, but.
No, but the numbers that were given or have been provided, there, there's a lot of speculation here, is all I'm saying. I mean.
The numbers that I have in my head are from my brother-in-law, who says twenty-five tonne is a semi-load. That's ten thousand tons.
No, I'm just saying they're in sixteen million dollars worth here.
Yeah.
Not four.
You have twenty-five tonnes of semi-load, you're a little overloaded.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Well, then that's, but that, that makes easy math.
Colin would, I mean, ra- rather than tabling this, would, or if, would you like, would you entertain tabling it, or would you like to lower that number?
I mean, what would you want it lowered to?
More realistically what you could do. I mean, honestly, if, if you, you, what, what are you, how many loads are you realistically thinking of getting out a week? Because, because that's what we need to, when we're making decisions for the, for you and for the neighborhood, we need to know what you are considering hauling out, so we know what it's gonna, how it's gonna impact the neighborhood. Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm gonna be getting stranded on there.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's like a, what Kyle said, it's more, it's when I'm up in the northern area working, like, like I said, I might not be there for three weeks, and then one day I might have. But it's, it's, but to be able to say, all of a sudden, I get a big project, we're doing, like Rick, Richard said, like, we're doing a system where loads of sand coming out, loads of sand out of there.
Mm-hmm.
So to have the capability to pull the sand out when I need to sand out, and just those hours of operation, and just to be able to have the access. Kind of where that, so. I, for me to pull two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand tonne out of it in forty years, with what I've done in my last four years, I won't, I won't get that.
Mm-hmm.
I won't be able to sell that much material. I don't, I don't have that for small, small operation.
You can make, Eric could, could make a motion on a stipulation and see if it passes.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we can add stipulations to what the planning mission already did, was limited hours and no crushing, so.
I guess I would like to m- make a motion to table it until we would have a more realistic number of what they could get out, because we could table it and not have to go back through the Planning Commission, correct, once?
That's correct.
And I'm, I can't give you a number of what I would approve, because I don't.
So I think last year, for, I think we, in total, out of all of my jobs, the entire year, I only. Out of all of my jobs, outside down north, up in that closer to Pargo. We have three dump trucks.
So I, so I guess I would hold that motion to table this until, um, we can have a more accurate t- amount of tonnage that, that could come.
So, so if we multiply thirty thousand tonne times five, that'd be a hundred-and-fifty thousand tonne.
Yep.
Is that a, is that a supplemental number?
I don't think I'm gonna pull that much out of there. I just like to be able to, if I, if I hit a hundred-and-fifty thousand, I'm like, okay, now we're done.
I guss it by a hundred thousand tonne.
Yeah.
Quite a bit.
Problem is, if it doesn't come out of his neighborhood, it comes out of somebody else's neighborhood, and, and it, there's a lot of it comes down. If you just go a little further east, that there's more sand out there. It's coming out of somebody's neighborhood, and it's going by somebody's house. Everybody in Becker County needs it.
Well, there's two within three-quarters of a mile of my house, and.
Yeah, it's just the way it is. Everybody needs it, and it.
Well, and I wo- I wouldn't be opposed to it in, by my house, but I live in the middle of the Boondocks, where I have four people that live on, or five, six people that live on.
Find clean sand just anywhere. That's, that's the problem. The glacier shoved it all around, and it's only in certain spots, and.
But we have.
It's out, out of town, so.
Well, it's out of town, but it's in the middle of several develop, or, you know, around, there's several developments around it, so.
I'll make a motion and see what happens. Or, or, or go ahead.
Oh, could I offer something? Um, I, if I got it wrong, I apologize, Richard Jepson, but did you make a motion to table?
No, she said she was. Talking out loud, dude.
Yeah, yeah, no, I didn't make it. Or if I did, I don't know if I did, but.
I, I'll make a motion, I'd make a motion to change the term from five to four years, and to limit the, limit the, ch- lower the limit from two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand tonne to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand tonne.
With this Monday through Friday to.
Yeah, with the mo- with everything else the same, yeah.
With all the two stipulations imposed by the planning zoning.
Go ahead.
Second that.
Like, um, okay, uh, motion by today, I don't know. Taken by Richard, prefer the discussion to term of four years and maximum a hundred-and-fifty thousand tonne, correct?
Yep.
Further discussion? Not, uh, call the vote. All say aye?
Aye.
Do a roll call?
If you would like.
Richard?
Aye.
John, aye?
Aye.
Here, Tom?
Name.
Thank you.
Karen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, there it is.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I don't, yeah, I, I was right on the answer, too.
No.
Pardon? Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, um.
Majority.
I can't see.
Oh, you want us to leave, don't you?
We don't believe, yeah, Commissioner's gotta read something, so, uh.
We're going to close session, uh, motion, uh, motion to go to close?
You don't, you can read that, another motion.
Motion to close. Motion to close meeting per, pursuit into Minnesota's statute, section thirteen D zero three sub one B, the governing body of a public employer may, by majority vote in a public meeting, decide to hold a closed meeting to consider strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategies, developments, or discussion, and review of labor negotiation proposals, conducting the pursuit into sections one seven nine eight point zero one to one seven nine eight point two five, to have motion to the close.
Motion.
I think she reads this shit, I'll second it.
Can a motion second the close, all in favor say aye.
Aye.